Good evening and welcome to the Riverhead Planning Board. Today is Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we're going to move on to our discussion items. And the first item this evening is Dish 5G, Wading River with Heather Trojanowski.
For the record, Heather Trojanowski, Site Plan Reviewer. Another cell tower application, modifications to an existing 102-foot, four-inch, twelve foot tall model tower located within a 7,309-square-foot public utility wireless communications facility located on a leased area of land, 2.2-acre parcel at 6232 Middle Country Road in Wading River within the Residence B-80 zoning use district with the parcel more particularly described as Suffolk County Tax Act Number 600-134-1-2.2. Scope of the work to the existing wireless communications facility consists of the co-location of three antennas for Dish Wireless with a new platform mounted at 68 feet above ground level. They're also installing six new RRUs, one over voltage protection device, and associated hybrid cables. Groundwork, ground-based equipment includes a new five-foot, seven-foot platform for Dish Wireless, equipment cabinets, and a GPS unit. All other existing antennas and equipment from other carriers will remain. Proposed action is unlisted pursuant to SECRA, with for need review being optional and not recommended. So staff is recommending that the planning board assume lead agency and also adopt a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA as no significant environmental impacts are expected. So I do have our resolution on to classify SECRA, assume lead agency, issue a negative declaration, and also grant administrative site plan approval for this application. We have our radio frequency electromagnetic energy analysis report. It was prepared and analyzed by an RF engineer. It analyzed and certified the potential RF exposure at the site from the proposed Dish Wireless communications equipment and also took into account all other carriers on the existing tower. The report states that the maximum cumulative RF exposures from all existing and proposed antennas will be 12.1% of the maximum permissible exposure limit, which is established by the FCC and will not exceed those MPE levels for FCC public or occupational standards. We also have a structural analysis report of the tower. It was prepared by Randall Ashworth, Engineer in Training, and stamped by Rafael de Toro Gomez, who is a professional engineer. Analyzed the structural integrity of the existing tower and the foundation and found that it has sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration. No modifications to the tower required at this time. We also have a mount analysis report for the subject application stamped by Cliff Abernathy, who's a professional engineer. No current mount exists at the 68-foot elevation, so based on the report, a new comm scope mount will need to be installed in order to carry the antennas. So one of the conditions prior to the certificate, the issuance of a certificate of compliance will be a post-construction analysis of the new mount as required by this report and then also all of the other installations after.
Are they removing anything?
No, Dish doesn't currently have any...
All additions.
Yeah, no equipment for Dish exists. They are licensed at certain frequencies, so that's why they're coming in at the 68-foot elevation. It's AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile currently exist on the tower. There are a total of 33 antennas. Dish is just adding three.
External, internal antennas?
They're all externally mounted on the pole. Nothing is enclosed.
You seem to be turning into a pro with this.
Yeah, well, I remember all of the questions that you guys have asked me in the past regarding the cell tower application, so I did reach out to the representative, gave him the list of the questions that you had, and he provided me with answers via email since he couldn't be here tonight.
See, I'm always reconcistent. Okay.
Good.
Okay. Our next discussion is Greece Specchio Manufacturers Outlet Center with Greg Burton.
All right. Hello, everybody. So this is a site plan application which most of you are probably familiar with. This one has kind of been floating around since about 2004. This is a site plan application seeking approval to construct 31,000 square feet of Manufacturers Outlet Center retail space and related improvements, including parking, lighting, landscaping, utility connections, and drainage. Approval of this application required a special permit from the Town Board, which was granted by the Town Board by Town Board Resolution Number 22-600 dated August 16th of 2022. Subject property is located at 2,009 Old Country Road within the Business F, which is the Manufacturer Outlet Center overlay zone. The property does front on Old Country Road, kind of a flagpole, but the bulk of the property is located between the Tanger 1 and Tanger 2 outlet centers. Property is located in the boundaries of the Riverhead Sewer District as well as the Riverhead Water District. The Town Board, by Resolution Number 22-501 dated July 6th of 2022, assumed lead agency status and issued a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA for the special permit and site plan application. So when Tanger 1 and Tanger 2 were built out, there was a series of easement agreements that was established across, because to get from Tanger 1 to Tanger 2, you do cross over this property, so there are a pretty complicated series of easement agreements. Pursuant to that easement agreement, access to the site will be taken from Tanger Drive. It will be, if you're coming southbound on page three of the report, the access to the site will be taken from that southbound through lane. You'd make a left turn into the site, and you can also come into the site from northbound on Tanger Drive. They did submit for the special permit. They did submit a traffic impact statement prepared by Dunn Engineering Services. They found that the proposed development would not, is not anticipated to have a significant negative impact on traffic flow in the surrounding area. This application did receive a New York State DEC Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers Permit for the proposed development. I did note just one discrepancy. The DEC permit does call for a 65-foot-wide landscape buffer on that southern property boundary. The site plan only depicts a 60-foot-wide landscape buffer, so they need to either amend their permit or amend the drawings. There does seem to be some space where they could tighten up that southern end, some of the landscaped islands and the sidewalk to meet that 65-foot requirement, but that's going to be on the applicant to demonstrate it. Utilities will be installed through the flag portion up to Old Country Road, and that includes water, sewer, and natural gas. Fire Marshal reviewed it. We got comments from Suffolk County DPW. At this point, ready to schedule a public hearing on it. I mean, this is essentially the same application that has been reviewed and approved several times before. They're just coming in for a new set of approvals.
So where do you have a public hearing scheduled?
Public hearing would be scheduled for the first meeting in December.
I'd like to see the actual 65-foot measurement because our residences, you know, the apartment's right behind here, so as much buffer as we can get, you'll probably be a good thing.
Do you meet the parking requirements?
Yes, sir. Yep, they meet the parking requirements for retail. I believe it's one per 250 square feet, and they do meet the requirements for that.
Okay.
Where did this miss the wall?
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Printed Place Major Subdivision, and that's with Greg Olson.
Yeah, so this is a major subdivision now known as Printed Places. It was previously Farmview Estates, and then before that, it was Old Orchard at Riverhead. There was a little confusion between other subdivisions, so it did change the name. The last time the board saw this application was a couple of months ago. So just a very brief overview on the application. This is a 25-lot major residential subdivision on Middle Road. Subject parcel is 26.1 acres. Property is located in the Residence B-40 zoning use district. The planning board has been reviewing this for a couple of years now. In December of 2019, the planning board approved a 22-lot as-of-right yield map of the subject property, which identified the development potential. In August of 2021, the planning board approved a 25-lot Long Island Workforce Housing Act Compliance Sketch Plan. Another Long Island Workforce Housing Act affords a density bonus to a developer with the provision that that density bonus is reserved for workforce housing. The Town Board recently adopted and codified the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, so there are provisions in our town code whereby those workforce housing lots will be bought and sold, and it'll dictate the purchase price. And then in August of '22 of this year, since there was a new project sponsor, they did submit an amended 25-lot sketch plan that slightly changed the location, the recharge basin, and the layout of the roadway system. So we have received a preliminary plat. The action is a Type 1 action pursuant to SECRA as it proposes physical alteration in excess of 10 acres. For purposes of secret coordination, the following are considered involved agencies: The Riverhead Town Board for the Lateral Water Main Extension, the Riverhead Water District, Town and Riverhead Highway Department, Suffolk County Planning Commission, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Do have a resolution to classify this as a Type 1 action pursuant to SECRA and initiate coordinated review among involved agencies. And the preliminary plat does contain all the information that's required on a preliminary plat pursuant to our town code.
Was the property ever considered for farmland preservation or open space preservation?
To my knowledge, it hasn't been. I mean, I can look at that. I don't know. I know for like, for example, the bills at Roanoke, I know the sponsors for that project were actively pursuing preservation of the county. I don't know if that's been looked at on this property.
So the increase in the lot size, Greg, not size, lot numbers, is basically because of workforce housing?
Because of the workforce housing. So the 10% density bonus, it actually gets rounded up, so 22 times 10% is 2.2, so they get an additional three lots, and those three lots will have to be built and maintained in accordance with the workforce housing.
Has there been any discussion about what to do with the open space?
So the open space, I would imagine, similar to the bills at Roanoke, they'll establish an HOA to own and maintain it. The planning board could establish conditions on that. The reason for that is to just kind of maintain some of that wooded buffer along Middle Road to provide some screening from the right of way.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful of that because I remember this, when this went round and round and round, we need to make sure that HOA is covered.
I don't have anything on this. Thank you, Greg. The last discussion item that we have is Holly Tree Lane Minor Subdivision.
Yep. So this is the Holly Tree Lane Minor Subdivision. The board has seen this a couple of months ago. This is a four-lot minor subdivision. It's out on Holly Tree Lane in Jamesport. It actually consists of three tax map numbers, 69-3-8, 19, and 62. What the application proposes is a four-lot cluster minor subdivision with a clustered development. The total parcel size is 12.96 acres. They are going to cluster down, and they are going to preserve the 8.5-acre farm parcel on the north end of Holly Tree Lane.
Is that actually a big farm?
I believe it is, yes. So the applicant required, approval of the application required relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Town Code requires for a clustered subdivision at the agricultural reserve, be it minimum of 10 acres. This application is only proposing 8.5 acres, but the applicant did receive that relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals by Appeal Number 22-33 with determination dated August 25th of 2022. We did get comments back from the Riverhead Water District, and they were forwarded to the applicant. They will require, they are going to be required to extend that water main to the back end of Holly Tree Lane where they're building the residences. There are a number of conditions that require a map and plan to be prepared. This one's pretty straightforward. Except when it was first before the board, this is really in the spirit of a clustered subdivision. It's the existing farm parcel. It's four new lots. I've spoken to a number of residents on Holly Tree Lane that seem to be supportive of it. The one condition which we'll address subsequent to the public hearing was Seaman Road, which is a roughly 16-foot-wide private right of way. Right now, it's just a gravel road, but being that Seaman Road will now be the main access point for that farm parcel, they may want, they may need to do some improvements if it's going to be traveled with tractors or, you know, trucks getting material to the farm. But I think that's something that the board can address as we move along.
That entrance is going to be on the east side of the subdivision, right?
So yeah, the four houses are going to be constructed on the north end of Holly Tree Lane, which is the eastern roadway portion of it. Seaman Road will remain as-is, but they're constructing the four lots in the wooded area. And in the subdivision map that they prepared and submitted, they did actually identify all the trees, trees that would be removed on the development property and trees that would be retained.
And there was a certain percentage that, was it 70%?
Well, so that was the percent, when you're required to do a cluster subdivision, the goal is to preserve 70% of the prime agricultural soils, I believe. I have it in prior reports, I think this was about 73%, so they didn't meet that criteria. But again, they, based on the configuration of the existing farm parcel and the roadways, agricultural reserves, only 8.5 acres.
Trees are more...
What's that?
Trees are more...
On the subdivision map, on one of the sheets, they actually do have the locations of the trees, and they show which ones are going to be removed.
Greg, do we have any comments from the Town Board area?
From the Town Board?
Mm-hmm.
No. I know I spoke with the Water District. The applicant recently paid for the preparation of the map and plan, but that map and plan's going to do the engineering work to determine what's needed to provide the subdivision with portable water.
Because according to this, they have to, they have to approve it?
They will need to approve it. They wouldn't even get to that point until the map and plan is prepared, until the Town Board can understand what improvements are needed.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you, Greg. Okay. Now we're going to move on to public comments on the resolutions. I see that we have a pretty good-sized audience here this evening, so I would like to limit the comments to three minutes. We do have a time clock up there, so Heather, I don't suppose that you'd be able to keep an eye on the clock for us, Deema. Okay, and if you see that everything is becoming repetitious, if you could just shorten those comments even more, we would really appreciate it. I've had a long day. I'm hungry, so I'd like to go get some dinner. So let's go. Public comments on the resolutions. Do we have anyone that wants to come up? Thank goodness I didn't make that speech for nothing.
Hi, good evening. John Kellum over in Northville. I'd like to make comment on the last resolution, which is 077, dealing with Villa, Villas Roanoke. As you may know, Villas Roanoke have purchased property before, and the county, with Al Krupski's help, legislator Al Krupski's help, has been able to buy that property previously, not this certain property, but other properties. And it's worked out that they're, when the county buys it, obviously they preserve it. With this situation on this property, Al Krupski and legislation team were on the ball trying to do their work, getting everything in line to purchase this property from the Roanoke team. Villa Roanoke seemed to know how to buy property cheap and turn it over and sell it to the town for preservation. This property butts the North Fork Reserve, which was purchased by the county and also by the Town and Riverhead put in, I think, 5% or 10% to purchase the North Fork, what's it? I'm sorry. North Fork Reserve, as I said, this property butts. What happened was that by the time the county was able to get their number, the pandemic hit. And obviously, everybody knows that when the pandemic came around, the prices went way up for property, for homes. When the county came in with their offer, the Villa of Roanoke denied their offer, knowing that they could get a whole lot more money. I've spoken with Al Krupski with a four-way call, with President of Northville Beach Civic, Linda Proizer, Vice President Kathy McGraw, and also Al Wicklund, who will be affected by this because the entrance to this property will be going in and out right across the street from his house. And I'm just hoping that in the big picture, that the Villas of Roanoke will be able to just wait for the second price that the county is coming up with because they are aware of it and they have, with Al Krupski saying, yes, we will do our homework and we will come in with a new number in the future. So we're hoping personally. 14 houses up there is, to me, minimum 20 cars, probably over 28 cars with the size of these homes. Pure Avenue and Penny's Lane, it'll be tough making a left turn. Right now, it's hard to make a left turn after 4 o'clock on Pure Avenue, which is what I live off pure, because right now, the trade parade from the South Shore has worked its way to the North Shore. And at 6 o'clock, anywhere after 4 o'clock, it's a line of cars coming through, and that doesn't even include the ferries dropping off during the summer. This past summer, they did add extra ferries to the roadways, which put more cars on the road coming through Riverhead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sounds like possible, doesn't it?
Good evening. Talk to you, Church and Greater Calverton Civic President. I don't want to disappoint you, so I thought maybe I'd come up and say thank you for the good wording in the draft tonight, and we do look forward to your vote. The folks that you see here are all from Calverton, mostly, I guess, behind the first and second row, and there are folks waiting at home. We have great hopes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else that would like to come up and comment on the resolution?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Board members. As Riverhead Town Supervisor and also as a resident of Riverhead, I am present here today before you to clarify with facts what led to the Resolution 101 before you, a moratorium on the saturation of large-scale projects in Calverton. I want to make it perfectly clear, your last planning board meeting was not the first time that this issue was addressed at Town Hall. On September 29th, 2022, I met with the Planning Board Chair, who shared concerns on the number of projects filed at the Planning Department. We agreed to separately look into this matter and reconvene. On October 5th, 2022, I requested a meeting with our Chief Planner, Jeff Murphy, and Planner Jeff Bergman, who informed me of the possibility of an opinion from your board, which is what it is, it's an opinion, to our board concerning large-scale projects in Calverton. On October 11th, I met with the Windcrest East Community for over two hours. Most of the discussions and many of the individuals are here were related to concerns with a nearby large-scale project. On October 20th, at 2:00 p.m., just one hour right before your last planning board meeting at 3:00 p.m., again, I met with the Planning Board Chair in my office to discuss the matter further. The planning attorney was also present. I want to make it clear that this matter was being addressed as comprehensively as possible, and it was not sitting at Town Hall on a desk collecting dusts. Increases were being made. Please note, good governance is about researching, asking hardcore, hardcore questions regardless of the answers that are received. Asking questions does not indicate you are in favor or opposed to an issue at home, as some ill-advised individuals have indicated recently. It is an intellectual approach for seeking information to make informed, practical decisions that will result in the creation of good, sound legislation. As many inquiries and discussions were made inside and outside of Town Hall, today, November 3rd, 2022, I am now a more informed legislator and a resident on this, and understand as a resident, the matter that's being discussed. Chair, thank you for the time you spent working on this community concern. I ask you to please move the resolution, which is an opinion, forward, and in turn, I will move it forward to the Town Board for their consideration because they are the legislators in this matter. Thereafter, we will hold a public hearing to engage the entire community in a civil fashion, free of political inspirations or political grandstanding, attacks, and the creation of falsehoods regarding the resolution at hand. And I thank you for your time, Chair, Board, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, do we have anyone else that would like to come up about comments on the resolutions only?
Good evening, Chairman Woski, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barbara Blas. I did write to each of you individually to thank you, but I'd like to publicly express my gratitude that you have considered the requests that have been made before you regarding a moratorium. These projects didn't come up just recently, as you know. We have been talking about this kind of thing since 2020, and the Town Board is actually an involved agency in these applications, as Mr. Nunez just even acknowledged they have to grant permission for water districts. So these applications have been around and should have been on everybody's radar screen for quite some time. But I'm actually going to address the final scope on the logistics center. Do you have a resolution, Resolution 105, that's amending the final scope? And as I followed the process here, you had a draft scope submitted in July, you had a public meeting in September that needed to be extended because of technical difficulties. It was extended for a second time, and in order to meet the seeker timeframes and not adopt a draft by default, you had to act at the October 6th meeting on a final scope. You had amended the scope according to recommendations and comments that came from the public. But during that meeting, while the resolution is on the agenda, Attorney for the applicant got up, and my read of the minutes, it was a total of six pages of comments and questions about the resolution that was being entertained that evening. Public had no opportunity to see a draft of that final scope prior to that, the day before. But anyway, the applicant did. The planning director got up and affirmed the fact that your hired consultants said everything was okay, your traffic engineer said it was all okay, and you actually adopted your... your final scope without amendments. And yet, tonight, we are amending it, and I'm, I'm concerned about one particular phrase that's in your draft scope or in your final scope. Page 12 of your final scope says, "Traffic data from other e-commerce warehouses and last-mile distribution facilities recently constructed in the Nassau Suffolk County area must be included in order to determine whether or not warehouse trip generation data accurately reflects, reflects the proposed traffic impacts from the operation of the site." I don't know how you could eliminate that. I really don't. And the amendment actually says that you are willing to accept information that we're providing to the applicant on the Gabreski Airport, um, Amazon facility, and nothing else. I don't know, I, I don't know how and what justifies the dumbing down of that request because that information is really important to what may or may not be happening in that area. And I'm, I'm really curious, I went to actually watch the October 20th meeting, it is not online, and ironically, the Octo, not ironically, but curiously, the October 6th meeting is no longer online. We don't have October 20th minute, minutes because you're probably adopting them tonight if you have them available. So, I don't know what transpired, I did not watch the October 20th meeting, but I'm wondering how it is that, that your adopted draft, and it was in the, in the, I mean, not the adopted, the final draft included that, the original draft included that, and now it is being, um, eliminated essentially. And I want to know how it is you feel comfortable about eliminating that.
The discussions, I remember, uh, the only thing that we traded was, uh, one site, one sound monitor on each side instead of two. And I believe that we left all the traffic, uh, issues to remain the same.
I, I don't believe that's the case. The planning department would provide the applicant with a traffic impact study for the Amazon facility. In fact, I actually have the exchange that Mr. Kent and Mr. Murphy ended up engaging in. Mr. Kent asked if he could ask a question. I'm just wondering if staff had an opinion on the request to do traffic counts at other e-commerce operated facilities. At that point, you, it's already in your, your, your document. What is the opinion of the, uh, staff at that point? What, what is the relevance of that? And Mr. Murphy responded by saying, um, uh, sure, thank you. Mr. Murphy, I believe the question is, do we have traffic counts from other, at Gabreski Airport, Airport, we have the Amazon warehouse, house facility, and we can get back to you? And then Mr. Kent says, so does that mean we don't have to include in the scope of work that data would have to provide if you're providing that to us? I mean, this is the, the verbatim, sometimes verbatim transcript is a little odd. But I don't understand, uh, why that situation was changed, and I would really, I really think it's important if you, um, cannot provide a satisfactory explanation to that, that I would respectfully urge you to stick with your original final scope that you adopted on October 6th.
All right, I thank you for your comments, but before you, before you step away, I just, I wasn't here at the last meeting that, um, you, um, attended, which I believe was the October 6th.
The 6th.
Meeting, and I just wanted to thank you, I did re-watch the meeting, and...
When did you watch it, by the way?
I would say it was a day or two afterwards.
Right? Because it's not there now.
Well, I, I don't know what happened with that.
I don't either.
But, um, it was nice for me to see you finally say that you were part of the comprehensive plan, because it was getting frustrating for me as I would go back and research the, the plan to see that, right down to the minutes of the vote for the plan, that you voted with honor for the comprehensive plan. And you keep coming up here and you're, you're kind of kicking the comprehensive plan around and acting like almost, we're not doing our jobs and you're, we're, um, you know, not, not doing things the way that we're supposed to be doing them, and you've sat yourself right here in this seat as, you know, a board member and planning board chair. You know that there are certain things that we have to go through, and each week, you would come up and just constantly just be on the negative side of things, and you were a part of that comprehensive plan, and, you know, you're getting cheers and getting high-fives from the local, you know, media editor, and people are, are getting aggravated with us when we're really trying to do our job. And I, I really hope that at some point, we do a good enough job that you don't feel like you need to come up here, week after week, and pick apart everything, you're just looking for, for something. Barbara, we're really, we're trying to work together and work with the community, and it, again, it, it's very frustrating, but I was very happy that, because I was ready to say, Barbara, weren't you part of this comprehensive plan? You know, I...
Indeed, I was a part of it for five years, and I served with Mr. O'Day and Mr., uh, Joe Bear.
Yes.
While I was the chair, and we did several years on the comp plan, then I moved on to the town board, the comp plan was still underway, Mr. Dennis Sesci and I had the, uh, honor of adopting it. When I come up here, I am asking questions, and most of the time, it's about process. I'm not sure there's a clear understanding about where, what, and how these projects relate to the comprehensive plan. If you're changing a zone, you're adding a use, that is not in the plan. So, when I come up here and, and discuss a project, it's not a project that is attacking the comprehensive plan, the plan is a guide. I'm dealing with the zoning, and the zoning is the implementation of the plan. And if you're coming up and you're discussing something that is not consistent with the zoning, and it's not consistent with the law, um, I respectfully say, like it or not, I'm going to come up here and express my concern and opinion because I have thirty years of experience understanding EISs and reading the code. So, I, I apologize if I come across as nitpicking and challenging. I have questions, like everybody else, my questions may be different from others, but, um, I feel as though I have the, the right to question things that I don't think are being, uh, analyzed properly, and I thank you very much for your time and your comments.
Thank you.
So, to the, to the resolution to amend the final scope, uh, October 6th, when the board announced the final scope, Ms. Blas is correct, Chris Kent got up and read his questions and concerns, the board had a discussion, uh, Jeff got up and answered some of those pieces. Uh, I was not here. When the board went to go adopt that resolution, if I was here, I would have clarified and sought clarification on whether the board intended to amend that resolution, because based on the conversation, it seemed like you were amendable to some of the changes of, when the vote came, that it was not voted on as amended. So, at the last meeting on October 20th, and I mean, I just checked right now on the town website, both of those meetings are available on channel 22. Uh, on October 20th, when I came before the board, we had a quick discussion about Mr. Kent's points, uh, the discussion that was had and seeking clarification from the board. When we left, I was, and I think everyone was on the same page that we were going to amend it, so, uh, we were going to keep the traffic count, the number of intersections is going to remain the same, we're going to have them count all the, you know, every intersection basically from the site going Middle Road East down to Nor, Northville Turnpike. You did agree to amend the sound study to capture one location along each property boundary, and as far as the traffic impact study, we are going to provide the traffic impact study from the Amazon facility at Gabreski Airport, and the applicant was going to supplement the traffic impact study with traffic data from applicant-owned facilities where they can actually use data, they own facilities, they operate them. You know, it was basically an issue where other facilities might not allow someone to do counts on their property. So, we discussed that with the board on October 20th, the board was amendable to it, so those are the three changes. We have one location along each property boundary for two-week period for the sound study. We will provide them with the TIS for the Amazon facility, uh, which is the last-mile facility in Gabreski Airport, uh, and we are, those are the only two amendments. We are going to keep the traffic counts on Middle Road and all these study intersections that we had indicated.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, Claudia Bianco from Bating Hollow. Two things, one is, I would like to thank the board for listening to the residents and acting on behalf of the residents with the proposed moratorium that you're going to do tonight. I'm glad you took the time to listen to what was going, what was being said and acting in that respect, putting it to the board. Number two, regarding Mrs. Blas, she is a walking Wikipedia of information. I would take every bit of assistance I could get from her anytime. She is immensely experienced.
I agree with you.
And nothing anybody comes up here and says should be taken as a personal attack. It is not. It is just that we don't think you see things the same way that we do, maybe we don't know all the particular details, but it's never on a personal level, drama, previous drama aside, but it's just for us to, as residents, to express our feelings and the fact that you listen to us, but nothing she says ever is, should ever be taken as a personal affront. It's never intended that way. The lady knows more than I could even imagine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Lyndon Nemeth. I live in the Windcrest East Community in Calverton. This Middle Road, uh, project is, I cannot tell you how alarming it is. I don't care how many traffic studies you do. Presently, Middle Road has become the new ways of getting any place off the expressway, off 25 to the east, to further east. Just to get out of the community tonight, I had to wade through twenty or thirty cars, and that's not an exaggeration, I had several people in the car with me. This goes on every day, and that's just at the end of the day, the beginning of the day, the middle of the day, and they're not going thirty miles an hour, which is the prescribed limit, they are racing through. Several days ago, a truck that had to have more wheels than ten cars was making a turn going south on Mill Road, and a big hauler, uh, I don't know whether he was carrying sand, I couldn't see what he was carrying. Purple body cam, that's all I can say. Coming south on Mill, he had to turn into the oncoming lane toward the horse farm, about fifty feet from the intersection, to turn and make the turn onto Middle Road to go west, in which case, he also came into heading onheading or oncoming lane and then came back. Heading past me up the road, because I was on a bicycle, he must have been going forty or fifty miles per hour. This is one truck. Through the last few months, when they were doing all the sand mining on Manor, those trucks were invasive on Middle Road. There was a non-stop traffic train. They're frightening, because if you know that four-way stop on Mill and Middle, the people who come to those stops do what's called a rolling stop. It's ridiculous, but that's a regular car. Imagine a car going through and one of these trucks is an accident, that's going to be so horrific waiting to happen. So, I don't know what they're thinking about that. We're senior communities lined up on both sides of that road. Now, I don't know if it's coincidence, just, I'm sorry.
We, we have extended the time.
Just, just one more thing, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Something else that seems to be a coincidence, and maybe you can clarify what's happened. I took, I've been taking photographs. The high-power lines that run across that forty-acre property or on the, uh, I guess, eastern side of that have always been semi-cleared. I'd say the people, PSE and G, whoever owned them at the time, would clear a small path so their trucks could get through. There is now a two-lane highway size cut all the way from Middle Road to the back of Applebee's and to the back of Costco, looking as if it's going to continue right to 58.
Okay, is that something that you're going to put into public record, or?
Yes, I'd like to, I'll give this to you as public record.
Okay.
So, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's simple clearing, or if it is, um, a plan of some other sort. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Just a minute of housekeeping, if I could. I made a statement that the planning board meetings were not online, and I just showed Larry where I was, uh, looking at, and he verified that if you went into, uh, and selected planning board from the list of meetings that you watch, you'd list, ask for planning board, the last one that's listed is the September meeting. If you go on to the main page and you get all of the meetings, you get chronologically all of the, you know, all the different boards, the planning board meetings are there.
They are, okay.
So, depending upon the, the route that you take. So, I apologize if I was misleading, I was looking at it the way I normally do, selecting the planning board, so...
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, do we have anyone else that would like to come up on the resolutions? Seeing that we don't, let's move on to the resolutions.
I move Resolution number 99, which establishes a policy for this board authorizing video conferencing.
Second motion?
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
I move, uh, Resolution number 100, which is a Dish 5G, uh, ma, naming the, uh, planning board as lead agency and a negative declaration, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Resolution 101, recommending the town board adopt a moratorium, development application within the industrial A, industrial B, and industrial C zoning use districts located within the Hamlet of Cavill.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
I'll move Resolution 102, drive, speak, oh, manufacturer's outlet, uh, resolution to schedule a public hearing, so, move.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
I move Resolution 103, which classifies major subdivision of printed places as a type one pursuant to secret and circulation lead agency information.
Second motion?
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
I move Resolution 104, Holly Tree Lane minus subdivision to schedule a public hearing on the minus subdivision, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
Move Resolution 105 for the Grand Hand Logistics Center, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
Resolution 106, virtual meeting policy, resolution to set procedures for the planning board members video conferencing attendance.
I'll circle it.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes. I have a motion to untable.
Yep, motion to untable the Villas at Roanoke, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes.
Make a motion to move Resolution 77, the Villas at Roanoke, so moved.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
All right.
Dennis Sesci.
All right.
Wosky, yes. Okay, do we have any public comments on all matters?
Tockby Church and Greater Calverton Civic Association President, once again, thank you. You've done what we have been asking for two years plus, also in front of the town board, and yet you took the action. Board, and yet you took the action. It matters to us. Calverton cares, and we're going to remember it. Thank you so much.
I would just like to say on that, that this is something that was worked on by this entire Board. We work together, nobody gets credit for it, we did it all together for you guys. We listened to you.
First time I've ever seen us give applause.
I know. There's my frustration. We love you guys, we love Riverhead, that's why we're here. And that's... Okay, then, we, let's see.
I'll move the minutes.
Move the minutes, thank you.
I'll move the minutes of October 20th.
Second motion? Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nunearo.
Aye.
Dennis Sesci.
Aye.
Woski, yes.
I'd like to say on the format, I like the new format. It's much better than the old ones, with the small print. Just on the minutes.
Oh, okay. All right, no other business, correspondences. Next meeting day is Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 3:00 p.m.
Most should adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.